Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth and my council colleagues. A call to order our public work session. In accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's declaration of a state of emergency due to the COVID-19 coronavirus effect Executive Order 51 on March 12, 2020, and the local declaration of emergency ratified by the Portsmouth City Council and due to the coronavirus pandemic which is continuing in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This called meeting of the Portsmouth City Council is being held by video conference on the 23rd day of March 2021 without a quorum present in the city council chamber in order to reduce the likely spread of the coronavirus in accordance with City Council Ordinance 2020-21 and 2020-102. Each council member is participating from their home or other remote location, and I am in the city council chamber. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke is going to join us in a minute. Mr. Moody?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mr. Woodard?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pace, are you prepared to proceed with your items, sir?
Yes, I am, Mayor. Mayor, thanks, Mayor, members of the city council. Based upon your request tonight, we have three different report backs for you. One would include the EPA Superfund Regulations Report Back, the Rush Street Development Agreement Report Back, and also Measures to Address Disparity Report Back. For your information, Ms. Lisa Denmark, who is a remedial project manager from the Environmental Protection Agency, Region 3, is online to entertain any questions that you may have relative to either the letter and/or the regulations as regards to state property for development. Just for your reference, I did send you that letter on May 18. It was the ABEX Comfort Letter for the former Washington Park site. Ms. Denmark?
Hi, good afternoon. Again, my name is Lisa Denmark. I'm the remedial project manager for the ABEX site in Portsmouth. I also have on the line with me Christopher Thomas. He is part of our redevelopment team. Chris, do you want to just say hi real quick? Thank you, it's on. Did he not get? Let's see. Hopefully, he's just able... Oh, I guess he'll introduce himself if he can get on there. I'll email him in the meantime. But I was asked to be part of this meeting to help answer and allay any questions or concerns about the redevelopment project that is at hand for the ABEX site. So I'll just wait for any questions, and if there's anything that comes up, please let us know. And again, we're also available at any time. There is an easily accessible website for the ABEX site for anybody in the public that has questions or concerns. They can access and email me or Chris directly at the agency. Yes?
Mr. Mayor? Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, yes, Ms. Denmark. The issue is not so much the redevelopment project. It just so happens someone is interested in redeveloping that land. I think what I would want from you as a council person, considering the sensitivity of that property and the history of that property, is some type of update in regards to the issues and also the citizens that are listening who are familiar with that site. The history of what has happened on that land to mitigate or eliminate the concern that caused that property to become part of the EPA Superfund property. And so I would like to hear that. Also, are you someone that has been on this project for a number of years in your position, or exactly? Can you give us a little history of yourself?
Sure, absolutely. So again, I am the remedial project manager. I have been for six years on this site. And my background, I'm an environmental engineer, and I've been with the agency for almost 11 years. My background is in remediation, and I've been working on Superfund projects for the better part of 20 years. We have a great team supporting the project. I see Chris Thomas has joined us. He's part of our redevelopment team and was part of the Comfort Letter and helps us as remedial project managers evaluate and go through the process of working on redevelopment to bring these properties as part of the Superfund program back into beneficial reuse for communities. That is a goal of the Superfund program that we pride ourselves on. Specifically to the ABEX site, we have worked for, as you know, many decades to get that site cleaned up and make it safe for reuse. As you're probably aware, there are several reuses that have been approved and developed at that site, which includes a gas station, a retail store, your own fire department, and their horses are on the property. We pride ourselves in the fact that we've been able to find appropriate reuses for this site that allows it to be part of the community and not just a blight for people to drive by. We're very well aware that, you know, there's a long history in the community of this site, and, you know, it'll not be used for residential use, but the fact that we can reuse it for something that brings jobs and, you know, revenue back into the community is something that we are very proud of. And it's something, like I said, Chris Thomas, who's on the call with me, has been part of those other redevelopment projects. And again, the team behind me that you don't normally see, we work very hard to make sure that anything that we do at that site or any of our Superfund sites is protective of the people that have access to it. It's a mainstay of the program. So I don't know, Dr. Whitaker, did I answer your questions?
And the reason I wanted the history is because there was some changes in EPA with the Trump administration, the Biden administration. I'm not sure how much has transpired since the inauguration. However, I am concerned that this property was assessed during the Trump administration when there was some deregulation. And so that's why I'm curious when this property was assessed. You said you've been on it for six years. However, there have been, as we know, some regulation changes in that time period, and how did that affect the assessment of this property?
Absolutely.
Lisa, do you want me to answer that?
Yes, go ahead, Chris.
Hi, Dr. Whitaker, I'm Chris Thomas. I'm the Region 3 Team Leader of our Land Revalidation Action Team. To answer your question, most of the work done here was done before the previous administration. The major decision documents, if you get into administrative record, they go back to the 90s, early 200s. So it's been through a number of administration changes, and we've kept this project going. But to answer your question directly, no. There were no changes made in the last administration that in any way affected the protection of human health and the environment at this site.
And I will add to that, Dr. Whitaker, that we, as an agency, the lead number that is used as part of the calculations to help us evaluate risk actually went down since the cleanup. And we evaluated the data that we have on this site against the new criteria, and we still feel that we have a safe and cleaned up site that is appropriate for reuse. So we feel very strongly that the reuse of this property, the ones that are already in place and future reuse, are appropriate. And EPA doesn't walk away from these sites whatsoever. There are five-year reviews that are conducted every five years. I'm at the site at least a couple times a year generally. Obviously, the pandemic has changed that this year. We will be starting another five-year review on the first part of the cleanup. We call that OU1. That'll be starting next year. Each of these redevelopment projects get not only my evaluation, but include the legal team, the technical team, as well as we include people at the state to make sure that we're looking at all facets of the reuse. And, you know, our goal is to absolutely make sure that any reuse is protective of people and the environment.
And so as far as the lead exposure, when that land is disturbed, what will be the ramifications as far as air particles, any concerns of spread, and how is that mitigated or eliminated?
Okay, very good question. So there are several layers of protection in place. First of all, the lead that is left in place is under a warning liner as well as several feet of cover. There is an ordinance in place in the city that does not allow digging at the site without a permit through your engineering office. They contact me directly, and we review that material and make sure that it's appropriate and handled. As far as releases to the air, generally, we're not concerned. You know, the material is bound to the soil. So unless somehow you had, you know, a major windstorm right in the middle of, say, a giant excavation, I'm not worried about windborne particles from this particular site. Again, when materials dug out, they're either putting it right back after they, say, fix a pipe, which we've had a few times at this site, or fixing something underground, and then they put the soil back in, they cover it back up, and it's protective. So the exposed soil, or I'm sorry, the contaminated soil is generally not exposed, and we're not concerned that it is somehow getting to a place where it's uncontrolled. We feel pretty strongly that it is well protected where it is. And in fact, when we have development projects that bring in asphalt cover, structures, and landscaping, we're actually improving the cover, right? Right now, the cover that we have at this site, or the cap, as we call it, is soil and vegetation. So by putting asphalt, as we have at the fire station and other redevelopment projects, we're actually improving the cover at the site and the cap. So those are positive things that we're happy about. And again, EPA is not walking away from any of this. We are doing inspections on a regular basis and part of all projects in hands at the site. So it's not like this site goes up and EPA is walking away with any redevelopment at this site or any other Superfund site. It's not, they don't, none of these sites get to walk away from the agency. Does that help answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay.
And Dr. Whitaker, you should know that as long as there is waste in place, EPA is by the Superfund law, has to come back every five years to make sure the remedy is protective of human health and the environment. That being said, Lisa does go out there. She said she digs out there two or three times a year to check on things. There's also state people out there, and the institutional controls in place are actually very tight. Can't be any digging at all without the proper approvals.
One more question. As far as the impact on the water with the water levels nearby, is there any issue with that?
So ABEX itself does not have a groundwater contamination problem, which basically means that the groundwater contamination that's present in the city, I don't think anybody would deny, is significant, right? We're not allowed, you're not allowed to use that water for drinking. But what we've determined through sampling and numerous evaluations of the groundwater is that it's not directly related to the ABEX lead. We were able to do that over the years through sampling, through what we call fingerprinting, as well as evaluating the lead concentrations. We just did a round of sampling about a year and a half ago. And what we were able to determine is there is no lead in the groundwater in the area of the ABEX Superfund site. That's great news. What that means is that the site has not impacted the groundwater, and so we have no need to do a groundwater cleanup. The groundwater contamination that is present is widespread and is, you know, due to long-term industrial use in the area. But there's also an ordinance in place that prevents any drinking water wells from going down into the groundwater in that area. So you're well protected from contaminated groundwater, certainly protected from the ABEX lead, and it's not getting into your groundwater. We've demonstrated that over several rounds of sampling through the last 10 years. And again, the lead in soil, we are not seeing any movement of that material. It's well bound to the soil, which is buried under a good cap. So we're pretty satisfied with this remedy. And we are preparing to, you know, continue talking about redevelopment at this site. And we're very, very proud of what's been able to happen at this site, given its long history in the city. Does that help answer your question?
Thank you.
I think there was another hand.
Councilmember Woodard, I believe you had a hand up, sir?
I think it was Moody, but I do have a question, though. If Councilmember Moody will let me go to answer. I'm good? Okay. Okay, yeah. How you doing, Ms. Denmark?
Hi.
Hey, all right. We had a lot of citizens that was concerned about the dwelling measures that could be, that could be implemented on the site. I heard you say something about the shopping center and the fire station, and people are saying, hey, why can't we turn this into residential use if we have firemen that's dwelling on the fire station sites?
Good question. So the agency has different concentrations, and we evaluate risk and exposure based on residential times, meaning how long you're out of sight or how long you're on the Superfund site. And so we have right now in place what we call institutional controls that prevent residential reuse at this site. Now, at any site, across any Superfund site in the country, you can get down to residential levels, but you have to remove all that waste that's in place. So at this particular site, we do have lead in place that's buried under that cap. So if the city determined that they wanted to make it residential and put some sort of, you know, residential units back on that site, they would have to go down to a concentration of lead that met our residential standards, which we do not currently meet. So the standards that we are able to allow for reuse are at industrial levels, industrial, commercial. So we're allowing, you know, the shopping centers, people to work there. Again, we don't, we're not having daycare centers or children in the yard, you know, where we think somebody would be out digging, putting material in their mouth and things like that. We have adults that are working at the fire station. And again, there's no pathway for, you know, say, firemen who are sleeping or working in that structure to have access to the lead that's several feet below that fire station. So we do not believe we have, there's no pathway, so there's no exposure. Therefore, we don't believe that there's any concern with the firemen being on that site. Likewise, the evaluation for workers in any of those commercial buildings. Does that help explain it, understand it?
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Are there any other questions from our colleagues? Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for a very detailed presentation, Ms. Denmark. Actually, concern was expressed for a project that we have under consideration, which is a storage facility. Some of my colleagues were concerned that the people working there and the contents that would be stored there perhaps would be subject to lead contamination. But as I hear your presentation, those concerns should be unfounded. Is that correct?
Agreed, and I'll just, I'll say, you know, again, the lead that is left at this site is bound to the soil, which is under two feet of cover and a warning barrier. So even if somebody were to dig and, you know, get to it, it says right on there, "Warning, warning", and, you know, tells you there's lead contamination and who to call, as a matter of fact. Again, somebody coming on site either to work in that facility or, say, to bring their couch into a garage or grab their Christmas decorations or something like that certainly is not going to have any exposure to lead. The lead is bound underground. And again, with redevelopment, whether it's that gas station, fire station, other commercial entities, we're actually providing a better cap to the facility because you're now putting asphalt on top of dirt with a building and other vegetation, which are all really good things. You're actually improving the cap that EPA, you know, oversaw many years ago.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other, any other questions? Yes?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mayor. Ms. Denmark, thank you for the detailed report. I know on our last presentation, the last that we heard from the developers who were considering this project, the Civic League also had some concerns. And while we have been given this very detailed and informative report from you, has anybody reached out to give them a similar report to kind of ease their minds on the type of concerns that they have with the lead? And then also, I know that the developer chose to do a storage facility at this site, and I know that there were some restrictions on what couldn't be developed there. But what were some of the other options that developers could choose since residential is out?
So EPA does not get involved in the planning of what, say, the city of Portsmouth would want to put at that site. You know, basically, we responded to what we call a Comfort Letter request, which, when developers come in onto sites like this, they often want to, need to understand what the parameters are and the risks might be for working at that site, what kind of construction, what they can and cannot do per the remedy that's, you know, in place. So EPA only evaluated that particular redevelopment project. And the Comfort Letter that we wrote, and hopefully you've now been able to have access to, basically, you know, outlines our stance on that particular redevelopment. The zoning allows for commercial use. Any new project that would come in would have to be evaluated under the same way that we looked at Safe Store. So it is really, it is up to the city and how you guys, as an entity, want to, you know, redevelop land in your city. That's not for EPA to get involved with. What I've come here today is to hopefully allay any fears related to this particular project that we have been involved with in trying to work with the redevelopers. The, you know, other things that you might be open to, we're certainly always open to talking to the city council about, you know, things they can do at this site. Generally, we're avoiding residential. We don't want daycare centers, right? We just don't want children, you know, we're not going to put another playground back there, things like that. But as far as using, you know, the site for industrial, commercial use, that is for you as your, you know, part of your planning and zoning and redevelopment plan. That's for you guys to decide, and we'll support the city in any way going forward. I know Chris does this type of work a lot. I don't know, Chris, do you want to chime in on?
Lisa, thank you.
Yeah.
And Councilwoman, thanks for the question. One very important thing here we should mention is, we wrote that Comfort Letter. Basically, it's kind of an odd term for a letter, but what it does is it outlines everything EPA knows about the site or where to find information for the site. But it, the big thing here is, it outlines reasonable steps that the developer has to follow to maintain their liability protections under the Superfund law. And that's very important. The reasonable steps in that Comfort Letter are the most important piece of that. They do not want to be a responsible party. So that's their incentive to follow the guidelines also of the Comfort Letter. EPA does, Superfund law does offer liability protections, but there's certain things the developer has to do to maintain that liability protection status. And that's a huge incentive, believe me.
Thank you. And I guess the part about the Civic League, I guess the developer would have been responsible for giving them that information to ease their mind?
Yeah, nobody else has reached out to me or anybody else on my team at EPA that I'm aware of. Certainly, you know, other developers, citizens, you know, we do hear from citizens time, you know, every once in a while. I haven't heard from a citizen in quite a while, to be honest with you. We had a public event in your city September, I think it was, 2018. That was probably the last big, big meeting we had. We do have another public meeting coming up for an action, and we advertise that and, you know, invite the public. That'll be later this spring, probably. But, you know, I have not heard from any other groups regarding this site or this development.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Did you have?
Dr. Whitaker, did you have one more question, sir?
Yes, I do. Sort of follow up to Councilwoman Burke's question. Although you are not involved, as we know, with city planning, have there been any inquiries that may not have merited a Comfort Letter, but have there been any other inquiries that other developers have had with you regarding commercial use of that property?
So I'm going to let Chris answer this.
Okay. I don't recall any other developer coming in and then walking away from us. We write Comfort Letters. We don't really, first, we have to determine if the people are serious about the potential development. And then we will write a Comfort Letter upon request. And I'm trying to think now. We've written a few of these Comfort Letters throughout the years.
I don't think we have any others.
I can't recall somebody getting very serious and then walking away. I just, I just can't recall.
Well, it's not so much walking away. I was just curious if you've had any inquiries on that property in regards whether they walked away or whether they were just inquiring about it, any other developers?
I've not been contacted by any other redevelopers or developers, I should say, coming in about this site.
Okay.
And I second that as well, Dr. Whitaker. I don't recall anybody coming in for this particular parcel.
And Chris and I work together.
Or just tapping us to see what's going on there. I don't think it's happened.
No, we haven't heard anything.
I will double, and I will check on that, just to make sure I check the records. But I don't believe anybody's inquired about that property.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor, this question is for Mr. Pace, and it's in regards to the concern about the community being contacted in regards to the project. I know in our last meeting, there was going to be some reach out to the community and give them an opportunity. And just want to get a follow up on where we are with that.
Sure, Dr. Whitaker. Just so you know, the methodologies that we use for this particular meeting included social media, posting on Instagram, Twitter, Nextdoor, and Facebook. And of course, we have over 49,000 subscribers that are on that list. We also sent an e-blast to our internal and external subscribers. It's about 3,500 people on that list. We think it goes viral to well over 5,000, and it does include all Civic Leagues and members that opted in on that list. We included a posting on the city website and a meeting alert for this particular meeting. Of course, I talked with Mr. Barry Randall relative to this meeting, sent him a copy of the e-blast that talked about this particular meeting and answered any questions that he had relative to what was coming up. Now, when this comes back again for a meeting on the 13th, I think it is, when it comes back, that will include another advertisement from the city clerk relative to this particular agenda. And then we will go through and do the regular things that we normally do to reach out to those departments in terms of advertising, let them know that this will be coming up on 13th of April as well.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the community definitely has an opportunity. I think it's what been, what, two weeks since we last discussed this? And I just want to make sure that they had ample opportunity to find out and also to question. And so definitely want to make sure that's done.
They did. And just for the record, like I said, I did talk to Mr. Randall. He did say that he would share that information with the members of the Civic League so that they would know about this meeting. And of course, we would do the same thing again for the meeting that happens on the 13th of April.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Were there any other questions for Chris or myself?
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have a question, sir?
Not for her, it was for the city manager. For, as, as far as the advertising and the social medias that we use, are we sponsoring ads? Because I, I know we posted on our Facebook and all that, but certain, certain things don't engage people as much. But if you sponsor them to show up on, on a regular in their feed, so that allows them to actually see what's going on. I know that's big, making out for the public. So are, are we doing any sponsored ads?
This, city clerk, didn't you do an ad? I think she did an ad to advertise the meeting for the public hearing that's coming up. Planning normally does whatever they do to promote certain things that come up. So yes, there will be a sponsored ad. It's not a sponsored ad on social media, but it's a sponsored ad, print ad that's going to be in the paper. All of the other stuff that we've done on social media are on our pages, and we're not actually buying advertising from Facebook, but we are posting it on our page, of course. Again, we have over 49,000 subscribers on that, on those lists.
Well, as far as that, in, in the future, I would want us to look into, especially with something like this, to look into sponsoring ads and buying that time on social media because there's a lot of people, especially the younger generation who's up there, that we can reach out to that will see those ads and get involved in this process.
Sure. Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor?
And, Mr. Mayor, I, I think, you know, for a project in that land that has so much sensitivity concerned, I, I think that we have to make sure that we're using multiple media other than the social media. You know, older persons really don't get on social media. And sending mailings, direct mailings might be something. But I just want to make sure that whatever decision we make on this, that the community was informed, had an opportunity to express concerns, ask questions. And, and I don't want us to just, and, and this isn't any slight on the efforts that have already been done, it's just that this, I think, deserves some additional outreach to make sure that the information gets to the community, other than what we've normally done. I know I would feel more comfortable with making sure persons had an opportunity. I think we've seen with this pandemic that we got to have multimodal ways of contacting persons.
Yeah, Dr. Whitaker, just so you know, all of our advertising, whenever we do advertising, we make sure that it's multifaceted campaign. Because here again, like I said, everybody is not on social media, everybody may not be on email blast. We do use traditional methods of promotional advertising. So everything that we do includes a multifaceted, cross-platform kind of promotional campaign.
Yeah, I, 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 I have no doubt, I'm, I'm saying that as far as the outreach of it, because for example, you know, planning, when planning sends out notifications, it might just be to certain residences that live adjacent to a particular property. And that's a mailing that is done. But now, as far as how in-depth that mailing goes, that's, that's what I'm speaking to, that we may have to use more in-depth media to reach certain persons, not that you're not using it, but to the extent that it's being used. And that's, that's why I just want to make sure that the community is well notified.
Sure, gotcha.
Thank you, sir. Well, well, Ms. Denmark, and I think it was, was it Mr. Thomas?
Yes, sir.
Thank you both for such, such an in-depth presentation. We're grateful for the work that the EPA does, and thank you for being with us this evening. You have a good evening, ma'am.
We appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Mr. Pace?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, interim city man, I mean, I'm sorry, interim city attorney, Mr. Stromberg, will have his designate make the presentation to you relative to the development agreement from Rush Street Gaming.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Jeff Miller, Deputy City Attorney. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm, I'm here to give you a, a report back on the Rush Street Development Agreement. Economic Development Director Robert Moore is here also to chime in and supplement as need be. If we could go to the first slide? All right, first little background on how the development agreement came to be. In the 2019 session, the General Assembly passed a casino bill authorizing the development of casinos in five Virginia localities, including Portsmouth. However, that bill had a rider that required a subsequent adoption of the bill the next year in order to have legal effect. So in preparation for that next year, November of 2019, Economic Development Authority entered into a memorandum of understanding with our developer partner, Rush Street Gaming. City Council then approved that cooperation agreement with EDA to back that MOU. The next year, in April 2020, the General Assembly passed the casino bill again, meaning that it would have legal effect. And at that point, we began negotiating development agreement with Rush Street. In May, actually starting budget night, we had a three-night session with city council where we went over the proposed terms of the development agreement, section by section, line by line. And then that next Tuesday, the 19th of May, we did the same thing with EDA for about four hours at the EDA meeting. And on May 26th of 2020, city council designated Rush Street Gaming to be the city's preferred casino gaming operator, and EDA and Rush Street executed the development agreement. Next slide, please. The first thing the development agreement does is set forth a number of the tasks that had to be accomplished in order to qualify to have a casino and proceed with development of the casino under state law. First, Rush Street had to submit a proposal to the city describing the casino, and basically the state put out nine factors that Rush had to describe. City Council accepted that proposal, and that's how the city then designated Rush as the preferred casino gaming operator for the city. Rush Street then had to submit an application for preliminary licensing approval to the Virginia Lottery Department. And Rush Street then received preliminary approval from Lottery in the early summer of 2020. That triggered the city's obligation to set up a referendum for voters to determine whether they wanted a casino gaming establishment at the victory site. The referendum passed two to one, and that triggered Rush Street, starting with their city zoning approval process. There was a rezoning at the end of 2020, and then, as you're, as you're aware, there are two more items related to zoning, a use permit, and, and another rezoning application coming in the May timeframe to city council. Rush Street will then be required to submit an application for final license to the Lottery Department. And when the license is granted, Rush Street will close on acquisition of the property to develop the casino. We are, we are anticipating that Rush will be able to submit the application to Lottery in the April, I'm sorry, the, the May-June timeframe. It will depend on lottery issuing regulations, which they have not done yet, to describe what has to be in an application. And then Rush Street, we are anticipating a closing in October, November of this year. Next slide, please. These are some of the major terms of the development agreement. The purchase price to be paid by Rush Street is $400,000 per acre. And Rush Street, in order to develop the casino and maintain their license, meet their license requirements of the state, has to expend not less than $300 million, so invest not less than $300 million in developing the casino. On the infrastructure side, Rush Street is solely responsible for all road improvements, flood mitigation, and other infrastructure costs that are directly necessary, the casino, hotel, convention center, and any structured parking that Rush may develop on the site. The initial phase under the development agreement is the development of the casino gaming establishment itself, which is to include not just slot machines, but also table gaming, as well as multiple restaurant venues. Other elements of the development that are contemplated in the agreement are hotel, conference center, structured parking, and development of out parcels with other uses once the casino is established. Next slide, please. All right, I know the hotel has been a point of interest. Under the development agreement, Rush Street is authorized to commence the hotel at any time after it takes down the initial casino property. However, Rush Street must commence construction of the hotel within one year of either, either of the following triggers. If they have net gaming revenue, that's basically their wagers minus payouts, if that revenue exceeds $175 million over any 12-month period, while a casino is operating within 15 miles, or if Rush Street has net gaming revenue in excess of $250 millions, 50, excuse me, $250 million over two consecutive 12-month periods, regardless of whether or not another casino is operating. If the hotel has not been developed within four years after the casino opens, then the Economic Development Authority has the right to ground lease property from Rush at a rent of a dollar per year and to bring in another developer to construct the hotel. Next slide, please. Okay, another term is the Minority Participation Plan. The Minority Participation Plan was required to be submitted as part of Rush Street's proposal that they submitted to city council back in May of last year, and it was included in Rush Street's submission to Lottery to obtain preliminary approval for licensure. Rush Street cannot close on any portion of the property unless they demonstrate that they are in compliance with Minority Participation Plan, and Rush Street is required to provide regular updates on implementation of the plan. Next slide, please. The plan has two pieces. The first is contracting. There is an aspirational goal of 30% of casino and hotel construction costs being paid to either minority-owned or SWAM, DBE-certified contractors. In this proposal that Rush Street submitted to city council, Rush Street outlined the procedural requirements that it was going to put in place to attempt to meet that goal. They are listed here. Essentially, a lot of them relate to requiring the general contractor to perform quite a bit of outreach. Also, the general contractor that was selected was required to have a strategy for achieving the 30% goal, and demonstrated a history of MBE/WBE utilization. Rush Street and the general contractor intend to, and I believe they have held informational forums, working with diverse community-based business associations, they're looking to leverage professional affiliations to find eligible contractors, subcontractors. They are to use, the general contractor will bid portions of the project to subcontractors. And when the general contractor does that, one of the factors the general contractor is to consider is minority SWAM/DBE participation in the, in the subcontractor bidders. If there are, if they determine in a particular area of construction that there's not sufficient capacity to meet the 30% requirement, then they were, they are to look at whether they can encourage larger subcontractors to engage in joint ventures with smaller qualified contractors to be able to up the participation. Okay, if the general contractor in a particular subcontract, subcontract area does not have participation, the general contractor is going to be required to document why that's so and demonstrate that they tried to do better. General contractor is also, and this is not from a contractor standpoint so much as a, a worker standpoint, the general contractor is going to host one or more community outreach hiring conferences to build a database of qualified skilled tradesmen from Portsmouth and the region who can be referred to contractors who are going to be working on the project and need workers. Finally, there is to be reporting on all of this. The general contractor is to collect and track utilization, provide monthly reports, and then provide a summary report at the end of the project. Next slide, please. Okay, the other piece of the Minority Participation Plan is equity participation. And for equity participation, and it's, again, this was in Rush's proposal to counsel from May of last year, which is made a part of the development agreement by the terms of the development agreement. Rush is to solicit not less than $5 million in equity investment from minority-owned businesses or minority investors who are accredited, which means that you're an eligible investor under SEC law, and that the primary emphasis for that investment is to be Portsmouth residents. Next slide, please. Okay, in, in addition to, to that, there are some other requirements that apply to the construction of the development. Contractors must use Davis Bacon wages, that's, in other words, the federal wage rate that's used when you're using federal money. Contractors must participate in a certified Department of Labor's apprenticeship program. They must have a preference for hiring residents of Portsmouth and adjacent localities, veterans, women, and minorities. And they must provide health insurance and retirement benefits for full-time employees. And these provisions are to be binding on the general contractor and on all subcontractors. Next slide, please. All right, after construction is done and the casino and hotel begin to operate, there are certain requirements that apply to wages and hiring. Full-time employees of the casino or the hotel are to be paid not less than 125% of the federal minimum wage. Rush is to implement hiring preferences for residents of Portsmouth, adjacent localities, veterans, women, and minorities. And all full-time employees are to have access to health insurance and retirement savings benefit opportunities. These requirements also apply to service providers who have employees working on the site. And finally, for vendors that is going to use in connection with the casino or the hotel, Rush Street is to adopt a local-first policy to seek out local vendors first. Next slide, please. Revenue sharing. It is anticipated that from taxes and other direct revenues, this, they will receive approximately $15 million, maybe slightly more annually. But on top of that, Rush Street has agreed to provide the city with an annual payment that's calculated based on its prior year revenue. And that payment would be equal to 1.5% of net gaming revenue generated the previous year, that's between 150 million and 200 million, and 2% of net gaming revenue generated the previous year over $200 million. Net gaming revenue includes not just revenue from the casino, but also 20% of Rush Street's take from online sports betting revenues in Virginia. Rush Street has a sports betting license, they've already started their sports betting operation in Virginia, and, and they will contribute a portion of their revenues from that as far as calculating the revenue sharing piece. Next slide, please. That's all I have. That's all I have, uh, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. It looks like we have our first question from our vice mayor. Uh, vice mayor, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, um, you talked about, um, minority participation, thirty percent being aspirational. Um, what percentage do we deem acceptable, um, if they don't get the aspirational goal? Um, cause I also remember you saying something about they, they have to document on why they don't, uh, they don't meet those goals.
Yeah, I think, uh, that our charge is to stay after them, to provide us documentation on what they're doing to comply with what they said in the proposal, and the penalty to them, if they don't comply with what was in the proposal, are, are a couple of things. Number one, we could bring action to make them comply with the proposal, or number two, we could shut them down on future development of other property that they haven't closed on yet.
So we don't, we don't have like a, a targeted goal if they don't meet their aspirational goal?
Well, quotas, i- it would be illegal to set a quota, uh, you know, a hard number, uh, but the reason the procedural steps are in place are to make sure that we have something we can monitor to make sure that they're doing their best to try and meet their goal.
So, but the, the only consequence is, is that we can just block them in the future?
That is a major consequence, yes.
Um, okay, so also you talked about the net gaming revenue between, uh, I think it was between one fifty and two hundred million. Uh, if they don't meet, get in between those, um, if they don't meet, get to one hundred and fifty million, do we still get a share of that?
We get a share, uh, you know, I mentioned we, we, we're anticipating fifteen million dollars a year. That has, that's completely separate from the, the one fifty to two million, two hundred million. So we're, we're going to get a share of taxes from the state, uh, and we think that share of taxes, together with property taxes and the other revenues that we'll get, will be about fifteen million every year, no matter what.
No, I, I get that part, but I mean, as far as the net gaming, uh, with the one fifty to two hundred, um, if, if they don't make that much, we don't get anything, a share of that at all?
We don't get a supplemental contribution.
Okay, and my last question, um, the preference on hiring Portsmouth residents and adjacent, um, and, and that too is, is more so aspiration, right?
Uh, well, tho- those are requirements. Those are flat requirements. The state, the, the hiring of, uh, the hiring provisions and the Davis Bacon and the other types of requirements for contractors, that was included in the state legislation. So that is a, you know, that is a requirement for them to comply with. So they have to establish programs for all that stuff. They have to pay the wages that are required. Um, now, if they, you know, if the programs are insufficient, uh, you know, then, then, you know, they, they may be insufficient, but that's, the require, the wages are required, Davis Bacon is required. Uh, I, I hope that answers the question.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moody, sir, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, mayor. My question is, on the twenty percent of the online sports betting, is that twenty percent of what, the net, the gross, and how would that be paid?
It's twenty percent of what they, uh, what they pay taxes on to the state, so they'll have to disclose their revenues to the state, and there'll be twenty percent of that, and that money is added on to the net income from the casino operation itself. And then you take, if that exceeds a hundred fifty million, those two things added together, then we get a cut.
So the sports betting, i- it goes towards that hundred and fifty?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
That was my exact same question, uh, Councilman Moody asked about the sports betting, and I know that it's online and that people may bet from outside, um, uh, localities that are not in Virginia, um, so I was wondering how that was set up for us to be able to collect on, on those proceeds.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
You're muted.
Dr. Whitaker, you're muted, sir.
Yeah, I, um, I, I just find the project overall just to be fundamentally problematic, um, considering the conditions of our city, um, and this not being a solution, I think. But as far as the transparency of this project, um, once again, the, the whole information in regards to the, um, conference center being built and how it was presented, and now we see these different variables, which I know the citizens were not fully aware of as it was presented, um, as far as meeting different, um, revenue goals before the, um, conference center is built. Uh, I would like to, um, go to, I think it was, uh, your script page number seven. Are you able to pull that back up? It's Mr. Attorney Miller. Right, okay, and so, my question is, who, who developed the, um, Minority Participation Plan?
Rush Street. The requirement for thirty percent was, uh, included.
No, no, I'm saying, who, no, I'm saying, who came up with the Minority Participation Plan?
You mean the?
Who authored it? Who authored the Minority Participation Plan?
Rush.
Who created it? Rush, Rush Street?
Yes, sir. It was part of the proposal that they had to submit to City Council, uh, to obtain approval as the city's preferred casino gaming operator.
Okay, so our Economic Development, uh, Office, um, took this Minority Participation Plan at face value?
Well, it was, it was reviewed with council.
Uh, well, is Mr. Moore, is Mr. Moore on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so Mr. Moore, um, the Minority Participation Plan, it was presented to the city, uh, through EDA, um, and it was presented by Rush Gaming?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so, this is what they presented?
So, there was, um, as, as Mr. Miller stated, there was, um, um, back and forth with Rush Street and the previous City Council with regards to what those terms would be. Uh, certainly, when we went through the process of enrichment, um, that was when this first came up as far as the Minority Participation piece, and we immediately began to, uh, speak with Rush Street regarding that Minority Participation.
So you say, you say you immediately began to speak, because, because this isn't a council negotiating this. Council wouldn't negotiate this. This would be your department, because you handle the day-to-day work. Council just assesses policies and, uh, gives insight. So when you were, uh, in the process of receiving this Minority Participation Plan, all I'm asking is, is this what Rush Street presented to us, and is this the final product of what they presented to us?
This, I would say this is the final product. Um, the, the number that we had was slightly higher, uh, but this is not, this is not the number, this was a number that was reached ultimately by City Council when the negotiation-
So what was the number that you presented?
We had upwards of almost forty percent.
Okay, and so, so that was basically only change from thirty to forty?
Yes, sir. We, we initially started out with forty percent, yes, sir.
Right, okay, and so, with this language that's in here, um, it says it's a Minority Participation Plan, and, and the reason I was asking who authored this, um, who created it, is because when you look at the language of it, in the first part of it, it says that that thirty percent of casino and hotel costs of construction paid to either, it says to either minority-owned or SWAM, DBE-certified contractors. And that's, that's problematic, because I know Rush Street realizes what that or means, and we should have too. That or means that they don't have to have minority participation. They could have small business participation, based on this language. And so I don't know why it's called a Minority Participation Plan when it doesn't even guarantee minority participation, because they could reach it by just getting small businesses, which is what we have seen a lot, and you, we've had a lot of minority vendors complaining about that, and thus the definition of small encompasses ninety-nine percent of the businesses in Virginia. And so I, I'm just, that, that language there is not a Minority Participation Plan. The question that Vice Mayor Barnes was asking, as far as what if they don't reach these, there's no penalty language in this plan, that if they, if they don't meet ABC under this plan, there's certain penalties there. And if Rush Street authored it and created it, I'm quite sure they wouldn't put penalties on themselves. And so that's what I'm saying, we, we have to tighten up, um, how we approach minority participation, and this is a prime example of how a company shouldn't be dictating a plan to us. We should be telling them what the plan is, and also, it should be language in it that will assure that there is minority participation, um, and also, if there's not, there are penalties for it. And just having to have them document and contacting them, that is not going to, uh, put any pressure on them to have minority participation. We've seen that over the years. My, my, my last issue with this is that if, if I understood, if I, if I understood you correctly, Attorney Miller, um, the money that will come to Portsmouth will be coming to us from the state?
Well, it'll be a function of, uh, of state taxes on the casino operation, and then there'll be property taxes, you know, city taxes, uh, all sorts of revenues like that.
Right, so, so the, the state funds, th- those are funds that will, in essence, trickle down to Portsmouth?
Well, it's, it's a direct pace, sir. It's, uh, in the casino legislation, there is a certain percentage of revenue reserved to each, to the five localities.
So, so that language is different from the lottery language that, uh, schools were supposed to be receiving?
I'm not familiar with the lottery language, but there's a definite, uh, requirement in law that localities get X percent of, uh, of the casino gaming taxes.
Right, and, you know, the, the concern there is that, you know, trickle-down economics hasn't generally benefited those it's supposed to trickle down to, because the state can very easily offset cut other areas, um, that this fifteen million, um, would not, uh, be a surplus, uh, to the city. And so, um, tha- that's why this, this whole deal, um, is just very problematic, and, um, the, the language here that, that we're seeing, uh, I'm, I'm just, I, I just feel that it's a bad deal for the, for the city, and, um, we, we should be looking at things that will help elevate the, uh, living wages of our citizens and quality of life, other than something that has all of these variables in it that were not presented to the citizens when they voted.
Thank you, sir. Is it, is there, Mr. Woodard, uh, sir, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, my question is for Mr. Miller. Uh, the, the general contractor is still S.B. Ballard, right?
S.B. Ballard and the company out of Alabama, yes, sir.
Company out of Alabama, okay. Um, yeah, so my, my question is based off this portal that they created for, uh, minority participation. Uh, what, what system is, or what, what dialogue is being, uh, implemented in this system to let the, the minority contractors know that they are even in the running, or, you know, they're, they're guaranteed some work, so they're just not submitting all the information to a black hole, and, you know, there's no communication? Be- because from what I'm seeing is that, um, a lot of the people from Rush Street Gaming is, is trying to create a database and encouraging them that they may have some work for them in the future for other projects, so I want to know what guarantees these might get the minority, um, minority contractors on this particular project?
Okay. Uh, Councilman Woodard, this is Robert Moore, if I could answer that question or take a stab at it. Um, first of all, as far as the portal is concerned, the, as soon as an individual, whether it's a vendor or even someone looking for potential employment, um, reaches the Rivers Casino Portsmouth website, uh, once they are, they put their information in, they are contacted personally, uh, whether it's by the local contact, um, Ms. Elsino Miles, most, more, more than likely it's her initially, uh, and then the outreach goes from there, uh, to whether it's S.B. Ballard or, or the company out of, out of Alabama. Um, what we have seen is that outreach, to this point, has been, uh, successful. Uh, they just recently, in February, middle of February, had a, a, an event to showcase and have a, an initial meeting with, initially, S.B. Ballard, to talk about what's needed to be eligible for these jobs, um, uh, for different contractors, and that had a registration of over fourteen hundred people. Uh, and that, if you wanted to watch that presentation, it is actually on their, uh, website as well, at riverscasinoporthmouth.com. Um, another part of that was, uh, S.B. Ballard understood, and, and, and not speaking on behalf of S.B. Ballard or Rush Street, but, um, and their notations with what, you know, the desire is for, again, minority contracting and making sure the individuals have the opportunity to have a piece of this project. Uh, they are also working to, for those, uh, companies that are not necessarily, um, to the point of certified to be part of this project, working with them to help them get to the certification piece before we get to this construction phase, and helping them and kind of mentoring them, if you will, and partnering them up with other, uh, companies to make sure that they can be, uh, eligible for this project. So, uh, their process is very hands-on, uh, uh, very, um, direct, and again, when anyone reaches out to, uh, Rush Street, when anyone reaches out to our office, we connect them with a person. We don't just connect them with a, a, as, a black hole, as you say. Um, they may enter their information, but they are actually contacted by an individual.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Vi- Vice Mayor Barnes, Vice Mayor Barnes, and then, then you can go, Dr. Whitaker.
I had a question as it pertains to the, uh, the net, um, gaming revenue, and it pertains also to the hotels and the convention center and all the extra, um, amenities. Um, who, who, who came to the, to the table with those numbers? Um, was it one, one hundred and seventy-five million for the first year, um, two hundred and fifty for the second year? Who actually came to the table with those numbers?
Those were numbers that were reached, actually, those were the last two issues of the development agreement to be resolved. They were resolved as part of the process of meeting with council, those three nights in May, uh, and they were the result of negotiation, uh, between the, the city and Rush.
Now, did that come up after the, you heard, you, we heard about Norfolk getting a whole, I mean, well, getting a casino as well?
Well, uh, I mean, Norfolk had been announced for quite some time before any of it, uh...
But it was, wasn't it contingent upon them getting one, or somebody getting one close by?
Yeah, that, that is a contingency for the, uh, hotel, yes.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I agree with Dr. Whitaker on this. This, this deal is very bad. I, I, um, I, I think we, we should have had a better oversight on this issue to make it better for our citizens. I, I really feel like our citizens gonna be in a, in a bad situation when it comes to this deal and when the casino, if it, if it comes.
Any, any, any other questions, Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, I do have, but on the, um, on the equity participation, the figure of, uh, five million, um, I asked, I asked the, um, I, I don't know if he's the CEO that was in our last meeting, uh, I asked him about the five million in, uh, equity investment, if that was something common that is done across, uh, their organization. He wasn't sure. My question is, what percentage of ownership does that five million equity investment represent? Do we know? My question is, what percentage of ownership does that five million equity investment represent? Do we know?
We are not certain. I mean, part of the investment, we know they'll invest at least approximately three hundred million dollars. A part of that, substantial part of that, will be debt financing. Uh, and the rest of it will be equity. So you could be looking at, for example, sixty million dollars in equity financing. So if five million of that would be one-twelfth uh of the equity. That's probably the, that's probably the best guesstimate.
But that that wouldn't necessarily represent the ownership interest, though?
Well, it would be equity in the entity. Uh, so if the entity, I I I think it essentially would.
Vice, um, looks like Councilwoman Lucas Burke, okay? You have the floor. I think I made a mistake, Councilmember Battle, I'm sorry. Councilmember Battle, sir, you have the floor.
So in essence, we are saying that our attorneys haven't protected us and implemented our will. Uh, that's what we're saying? Is that the essence of what what we're saying here? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Lucas Burke?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and and thank you all for for the conversation, the dialogue regarding this. Um, that we um looked at this agreement um as a council, former council, and and we were up against five localities uh that the General Assembly, as you remember the timeline, um that was given, the General Assembly passed this legislation in twenty nineteen, first time, and then a second time um in April of twenty twenty. And and then it went to a referendum for the citizens to decide. So this presentation that you're getting now is pretty much um a courtesy of an update to provide you on the processes that have been done uh for uh this process. So it's not a matter of um, you know, our decisions now on whether um some of these percentages should have been higher, should have been forty percent, should have been forty-five percent. This is what was negotiated. And it was not just negotiated for Portsmouth. It was also negotiated for uh Danville and Bristol and Richmond and, of course, Norfolk. Um, so that those, you know, uh the the developer that we chose, all of us chose someone different. Um, of course, the rates might have been slightly lower or slightly higher, but we're all pretty much within the same ballpark because the General Assembly had some footing into this as well. We went to Richmond several times to meet with legislators um and delegates and senators to make sure that we were on track with what we were doing. This was new uh to all of us. And we were relying on, you know, our economic development team, our attorney team, um the Rush Street Development Team, and then, of course, council uh making decisions are based on the information that was provided to us. You know, so this is gonna be new. The only thing that we as a council have to go in and vote on now is if we want to allow the land use to be an entertainment district. Um, so, you know, there's no blocking this uh from this council because the citizens of the city of Portsmouth have already voted that they want this. Now, whether we decide at some future time when Rush Street decides that that their um investment amounts are growing or that this is gonna really happen, I don't know if any of you guys have been out and have seen people at the Seven Eleven and at the BP and at the gas station and everywhere, people are putting some money out. They putting some money out, and I've seen other cities that have the Rosies that have those establishments. I heard that that one Rosies made seven million dollars in three weeks, in three weeks. That's not even thirty days. You know, so there is money to be made. I think that we're gonna get our share of it. The citizens voted overwhelmingly that they want this. So us listening to this information and and making any kind of comments, that, you know, our opinions are just that. You know, um, the decision has been made. We've already had a proposal that's already been submitted to the lottery. They have already paid uh for uh the licensing fees, so we're just in a waiting stage now. But I appreciate the comments, but it is, I think if it's gonna go, it's gonna go, and the citizens are gonna show um that this is something that they want.
Thank, thank you, Council, Councilwoman Lucas Burke. And and if I could just add 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 some clarity to a few things. Um, y- y- you know, when we went through the negotiation process, it wasn't just, you know, council members in the room. We had lobbyists, we had a team of folks who had extensive experience in casino negotiations and bringing the best deal to Portsmouth. We had our legal team represented, and we took this very seriously uh because we wanted to do what was right and in the best interest of not only a revenue, but in the best interest of our citizens in Portsmouth. And I can tell you, some of the protections that were put in there when we had the discussion. For example, infrastructure. We 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 said we didn't want to have anything to do with infrastructure. We didn't want to bear that cost. I can tell you, minority participation, we talked about that, and we wanted minority participation. And we also wanted to see equity in here, and and I agree with all many of the positions that I've heard today. But I just want to reiterate to my colleagues that this was a process that included a lot of smart people who had extensive experience in this process. This is the first time we've done this in the state of Virginia. And I can assure you, at the state level and at the local level, we wanted to get this as right as possible. Is everything gonna be perfect? I I would say probably not. But we are headed in a direction, and we are committed to seeing this through. We want to be the first casino uh in the state of Virginia, freestanding casino in the state of Virginia. And I believe um with the partner we have in Rush Street Gaming and all the other entities that are participating, we'll get there. And at the end of the day, I look forward to it being a success. So I just wanted to make that clear, that a lot of thought, a lot of care and concern went into this process, and it will continue to go into the process. Thank you. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, um, let let me just, uh, let me say, Councilman, Councilwoman Burke, um, let let's be careful of being dismissive of uh wanting to have questions answered and also trying to um reach conclusions uh based on critical thinking. Um, I think that the reason why it is still before council is because there there are some council actions that need to take place. Uh, and it's not just a done, a done deal. Um, so I I just want to caution us from um being dismissive. It's one thing to support the project, but um, you know, I don't want you to think that we shouldn't be asking uh critical questions um on on these issues. Uh, als- also, um, Mr. Mayor, no one is questioning the intelligence, the know-it-all of anyone that has been in the room coming to these conclusions. It is not an issue of whether they were intelligent, how much know-it-all they had. I'm I'm quite sure we know that the men that founded this country were considered to be very intelligent and wise men, but you see the system that they left in place that we are still struggling with today. And just like they should have been looking out for the best interest of all people, that's the same thing we're trying to do. Make sure we're looking out for the best interest. We were voted in the office not to vote based on how many people agree or did not agree on a particular issue. We were voted in to uh look at the issues, to vote what is in the best interest, and to be stewards of the land and that which belongs to Portsmouth. And so I just want to make sure, because the citizens are listening to this, this is not an issue of us questioning anyone's intelligence. We are trying to get to the truth of matters, and in doing that, there are critical questions that we're gonna ask and continue to ask, and it should not be dismissed by by anyone. And I just want to say, um, as far as I'm concerned, um, I'm going to make sure that whatever I vote on, that it's gonna help uplift the community as a whole. And so I just want to make sure we're clear on that and that we don't get distracted by dismissive language and getting off track with discussing who was in the room and how intelligent people are. That's not, that is not the issue. The the issue is, is this a good project? And I think different ones have different opinions based on some facts that we are assessing, and I just want to make that clear.
Thank, thank, thank you, sir, and 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 I apologize if I was dismissive in any way.
No, no, you don't have to apologize. It's not to apologize for, I I was just speaking to the fact that I don't want us to get caught up in all this language of intelligent people being in the room because they have always been intelligent people making decisions. That's not the issue. The issue is, uh, do they have our best interests at heart? That's the, you can, you can be as intelligent as you want and still give us a system of slavery. So um that's not, that's not my concern there, okay? So there's no need, you didn't offend me or anything. Uh, it it was nothing offensive.
Thank you, sir.
Neither one of you, neither one, ni- neither Councilman, uh, we are, we are adults and just having a conversation.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, sir. Uh, Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
Um, to go back to a couple of statements that was made, um, it's, I I I know, I know everything can't be perfect, but at the situation that Portsmouth's in, we definitely need everything to be close to perfect. Um, and and I know the citizens did want the casino, but they also wanted the hotel and all the extra amenities that went with it. And a lot of them were under the assumption that those things were coming, but I I think now, after talking to a lot of people and after getting that information out there, um, a lot of people have changed their minds on certain things because of the certain things that aren't coming. I think we have to be careful in this city um when it comes to bringing business in because we 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 try to dismiss the the deal, what how bad or good they are by saying it brings tax money. Um, we have to show some worth in this city. And and it seems like with the deals in this city, we we're not showing worth. If they dangle some money in our, in front of our face, we're like, oh, we're gonna go ahead and take that deal because it's taxes. But we we gotta show that we, it's something worth here, and that Portsmouth is a place that that can do good business and have great things here. Right now, some of the things that we have going on, I just don't think that that's the, that's the mindset. And I feel like we're just putting anything in for and just agreeing to any type of deals that people want to make with us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are are there any other questions uh from my colleagues? Thank, thank you, Mr. Miller, Attorney Miller, and thank you, Mr. Moore, uh, for being present here today. Have a good day, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pace?
Yes, sir, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Rivers City Council. Uh, Mr. Interim City Attorney, Mr. Stromberg, will um give you a report back relative to measure, measures to address this.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Pace. Uh, at the direction of Dr. Whitaker, uh, we were asked to investigate uh certain statutes, state statutes, as well as local code sections to see if there was a way uh to uh remedy the disparity that has occurred and is occurring due to uh 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 past discrimination. And uh we've sent out a memo. I think everybody should have received it. It's an excellent memo drafted by Deputy City Attorney Jeff Miller. Uh, it, in the beginning of that memo, goes through and talks about uh some background. I'm gonna, I I encourage you all to read that, but basically, uh, there's a state statute that allows localities to pass a law whereby the chief executive officer, in this case, the city manager, uh, is authorized and encouraged uh to uh implement remedial measures to address uh past discrimination and to remedy that past discrimination. Uh, Dr. Whitaker had some specific questions for us, and I'm gonna get to those questions in just a second. But that statute, that state statute is divided into two parts. I'm only gonna deal with one part that deals with minorities and women. And the other allows for programs that are race and gender neutral. Uh, this part of the statute allows for um programs that are not race or gender neutral. Uh, they're intended to help minorities and women. Uh, that is fifteen point two dash nine sixty-five point one, if anybody wants to look it up. It's in the memo, of course. That does allow, as I mentioned before, for localities to pass laws uh or a law for the city manager to uh implement programs, authorize programs, and of course, city council would be involved uh to remedy that past discrimination. Uh, because it's not race or gender neutral, it has to pass what's called a s- a strict scrutiny under the Fourteenth Amendment. Uh, you can't just do it. You have to show uh that there's a need for it. And the case law, uh, which is cited in in the memo, says there's a need for it, okay? So we're we're good there. Um, but to prove that, you have to have disparity studies. And you just can't say, well, there's disparity and and we want programs to remedy that disparity. You have to prove there's a disparity, and that's done through these disparity studies. The last one done in Portsmouth, I think, was two thousand and fifteen, I believe. The the city has passed a local ordinance, uh, we'd like to amend it, but it has passed a local ordinance uh directing or allowing for the city manager uh and council, or in this case, it's actually the uh procurement director, but it can be changed to city manager, and that was one of Dr. Whitaker's questions, uh, to implement programs to fix this disparity, to remedy this disparity. And so we do have that statute on the books, uh, on our local books, uh, so that's there. There are four questions I want to get to. Number one, can the authority granted by that that state statute I mentioned be used more broadly than in just in procurement? The short answer is yes, and quite frankly, I was a little surprised at that. It's great. Uh, what Mr. Miller has done here is weaved a way through the law uh that gives it some teeth. It it's just an unbelievable, excellent memo. It it's a a lawyer's type memo, and uh I I really encourage you all to read it, the way he weaved a a way we can accomplish what we want to accomplish or what the council wants to accomplish. So, yes, the the state statute can be read more broadly uh than just procurement. And uh that's the way we read it. Uh, it it's not an open and shut case, but it there's enough there that, yes, it it includes more than procurement. And to, what 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 that statute says is, any locality may enact an ordinance providing that whenever there exists a pervasive or persuasive analysis that documents a statistically significant disparity between the availability and utilization of woman-owned and minority-owned businesses, the chief executive of the local governing entity shall be authorized and encouraged to require implementation of appropriate remedial measures consistent with prevailing law. So even the state statute doesn't limit limit it to procurement. It says the chief executive uh officer, which in our case would be the city manager. And we would envision at some point, if city council wants to move forward with this, maybe hiring a special person in the city manager's office or 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 designating a certain person in the city manager's office uh to to be the one to to follow this. Uh, designate it just to to make sure that this is being implemented. The second question was, and I've sort of answered it already, can our local statute, twelve dash one seventy-six A of the city code, be amended to substitute city manager or designate for purchasing administrator? Because right now, our local statute just says purchasing, the purchasing administrator can do this. And uh based on our analysis, we do believe the city manager uh can be substituted for that, and we would encourage that that be done down the road. The third question that Dr. Whitaker uh astutely raised was that is the definition of small business in our code adequate or proper? And what what the city code did is they just latched on uh to the uh the state definition, uh, which is really, i- i- it's so large, the parameters are so large with that. It's not even dealing with small businesses, quite frankly. And um I think Dr. Whitaker recognized that problem. And uh the good news is that there is a new state statute that we found uh that creates um what's called microbusinesses. Um, microbusinesses, uh, let's see, I think can only have twenty-five, no more than twenty-five employees. They have to be minority or women-owned. So instead of having two and So instead of having two hundred and fifty employees where, you know, you know, this, a- as Dr. Whitaker commented earlier, uh, small business is defined, almost everything's included, but not with this micro business statute. And so uh, we can enact that. Uh, we don't have to uh define small business necessarily. Uh, before we found this statute, it was just passed this year, by the way, or last year. Uh, we were gonna, and we probably still will contact Richmond because Richmond defines small business differently in the code than the state defines it. Richmond did that. And so our game plan was, was to contact the city attorneys in Richmond, uh, talk to them, see how they did it, see how it's working out up there. But, and, and we still plan to do that, but now we have this statute uh that allows us to create a definition for a micro business, which is only, you know, less than twenty-five people. So that sort of solves that problem of the definition of small business that we were using before, the state definition. That's way too big. And then lastly, the fourth, fourth question uh was how long does a dis- uh disparity study stay in effect? Because you remember, we've gotta have a study proving that there's disparity if we wanna implement this program. Can't just implement it without any proof. Uh, and so uh, the disparity study is about six years old right now. Uh, just through case law and so forth, we've determined that, that the, the, the life of a disparity study is about seven years. So it's time to uh move forward with a new di- uh disparity study. Uh, I'll take questions in just a second, but uh, what we would recommend are three things. Uh, if you want us to move forward with this plan to remedy past discrimination in procurement and business development, number one, allow us to contact Richmond. Give us the okay to move forward with this. We'll contact Richmond uh and see how they handle their plan because they were really out in front of things, number one. Number two, we would ask that we start or have a uh, start the disparity study, contract out to go ahead and do the next disparity study. This one's old, it may not hold up if we get sued or, or something. So we need a new disparity study. And lastly, we would amend the code uh by substituting city manager for, I think it says uh, chief financial officer or procure, or, or whatever definition they use. Uh, we would expand that a- and put it under the city manager. Now, that doesn't mean the city manager can get involved with specific procurement. The procurement director is under strict rules and he would continue. But as far as overall policy, city manager could certainly, is directed to do so. Uh, so we would ask that we uh, amend the code to substitute city manager, maybe his, his or her designate, if you wanna have a specific office uh to handle this. Uh, and then lastly, uh, as far as amending the code, uh, we would like to change the definition of small business, uh, maybe use this micro business, uh, but we do wanna talk to Richmond first and see if there's some advantage to using their definition. They used a similar definition. It was prior to this code, um, code section being passed this, I think it was just passed this past year. And so um, with that, I'll open it up for any questions you might have. We're excited. Uh, this is really um cutting-edge law. And for a lawyer to be on, on the cutting edge, i- it's something we value. And uh, but of course, we take direction from city council. So whatever you guys wanna do, uh, let us know and we'll move forward uh, starting with those three things I just mentioned.
Thank you, Attorney Stromberg. And Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, um, uh, thank you, Attorney Stromberg, and also um Attorney Miller for the uh memo, excellent memo that was submitted. I, I do just wanna say that although I, I did have uh questions and a deep interest in this area, it, it wasn't under my directive that the city attorney acted. It was under the direction of council. So I just wanna make sure, be clear on that. And uh, also, I believe that we should operate um on a system of social and economic justice. Uh, that's the bottom line, that, that we should be treating everyone fairly and equitably, given that the people of this city hold the council responsible. It, it starts with the council. If anything goes down, generally, it's gonna come at the council. We get the emails, okay? If that's the case, the reason why, um, and I want my colleagues to be clear what we're trying to do here. We're trying to make it so that the city manager is held responsible uh for making sure that there is equity throughout our contracting, development. With the non-interference clause that we know is present, we can't reach down into telling the procurement officer what to do. And with the language as presently is, is the procurement officer that is basically over the minority participation contracting program, if, whatever it is. And so what this language will do will allow for council to now hold the city manager responsible so that when we get projects that come to us, as we've already seen, uh, millions of dollars that have no minority participation, uh, we will hold the city manager responsible for making sure things have been implemented. And so I just wanna make sure that my colleagues understand that is the purpose of changing the language. And I believe that putting it at the city manager level will give us more accountability for what happens as far as there being equity uh throughout. And so that's, that's the purpose of why the city manager, it should be changed from procurement officer uh to city manager. Uh, also, um, I just want to um follow up on something. Attorney Stromberg, you mentioned that there may be a person that the city manager hires that would be over this. Um, I, I would say, I would say to my colleagues that we need to make sure we leave it in a position where, once again, we can't touch that city manager hiree because that becomes non-interference, okay? I would suggest we keep it with the city manager. Now, if the city manager decides to turn it over, that's the city manager's choice, but we would still hold the city manager responsible for that. And so um, I, I think from what I've seen of our colleagues here, we, we're about social justice. We've seen how the system has not worked for everybody. And um, Ms. Str- Attorney Stromberg, you correctly stated, it, it's sad to say, but it is here in twenty twenty-one considered cutting edge that we're trying to bring in a equitable program that should have been in place. And so I, I hope that um we can get an ordinance before us that changes the um name, naming from procurement officer to that city manager and the disparity study uh so that we can start holding um persons accountable uh for what comes before us as a council. And so I, I, I thank you, I thank you for that. And ho- hopefully, we can get that before us uh pretty soon 'cause as, as we're seeing, we're seeing a lot of projects coming before us uh that do not have equity in them.
Yeah, do, do you, do I need a vote on the disparity studies? Is that something we can record without, or just a consent?
Uh, I'm, I'm talking about the, the ordinance I was talking about, Attorney Stromberg, was the um change of the language.
No, I understand that, yeah, that too. But, but as far as the, the, we gotta have that disparity study also in place. Uh, do we, do we typically vote on that every seven years or so, five years, whatever? We can bring it up later or uh in an open session. Uh, or we can do it by consensus, I suppose.
Hold on, Dr. Whitaker. Mr. Pace, do you wanna just add anything to that or you, you do not?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I just thought you had something you wanted to add. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, you muted.
You have the floor, sir.
Okay, um, I, I believe we have to put an RFP out for, for another disparity study, which is something we would have to.
That's why I was talking to the manager. I wanted to make sure we were clear on that, sir.
We'll, we'll look into the specifics and, and uh do whatever we have to do to get that moving and, and the other, the amendments and so forth. Uh, we do wanna talk to Richmond, get any of their ideas and see what they did. But we'll move forward with it if we have the consensus of council to do so.
But Attorney Stromberg, when you mentioned Richmond, are you referring to the city of Richmond or are you talking about the general assembly?
No, I'm, I'm referring to the city of Richmond.
Okay.
They did something similar before that new statute was even passed. So we, we just like to, you know, it's always good to talk to other uh localities, see what they did, and they, they did it a while ago.
Okay, okay, all right.
We'll just call their city attorney's office and.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Barnes, you had a question, sir?
No, I didn't have a question.
Okay.
Thanks, though.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, so is it in order for us to, as we move forward with our, heard a disparity study? Do we need to take any action with that or are we all good with moving forward in that direction?
Do, do we need to direct the city manager to put out an RFP?
That is my question.
Yeah, we can find out what's required and br- bring it back or if we don't need to bring it back, we'll just do it. Uh, if, if there's a consensus to do it, uh, whether there's an RFP or however it's done, we'll, we'll figure it out and do it. And if, if city council approval is needed, then I guess we'll uh, we'll, we'll just bring it back uh in two weeks for approval to do it.
And, and Attorney Stromberg, just to make sure everyone's clear too, the, the language of that ordinance that's gonna be changed will give the city manager authority outside of just procurement.
Yes.
But with any development, contracting, programs that come through the city, that it is expected for there to have some um type of participation in it. And so when projects come to us as council, we, we shouldn't have to be questioning whether it's there. It should already be there.
Understand.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay, thank y'all.
Thank you for the discussion. I believe we now have a need for, for a closed session to uh, motion for a closed session to discuss our appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have a motion on the floor?
I move to go into closed electronic meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection two point two dash three seven zero eight dot two A dot two and two point two dash three seven one one A point one and City Council Ordinance twenty twenty dash one oh two for the purpose of discussing and considering appointments to boards and commission.
Thank you, sir. Motion's been made. Second, Madam, Madam Clerk, will you call the role, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasburg.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes.
We have a closed session. So we're gonna come out of closed and then we're gonna, we're gonna come back at seven fifteen. Okay, give us a few minutes, seven fifteen. Motion, please.
I hereby move that each council member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from opening, from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
Sir, Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasburg.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes.
The closing is adjourned. We'll see you all back in the open session, seven fifteen. Thank you.